Well, we already called the meeting to order and had our executive session. And now it is time for the flag salute. So you can see there's a flag on the screen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we don't have any special presentations tonight. Dr. Forte, superintendent comments?
Okay, everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so our field trips, well, as you know, all field trips were canceled. Summer enrichment canceled and quarter four enrichment also canceled. All the reimbursements are underway. If any public has a problem or question about with their reimbursement, please contact the principal, but we are providing a full refund. Graduation downs, the decision's being made this week. To be fair, more information from the Value View principal. End of year activities, all end of year activities will be virtual. merge your state police and governor's directive. Lakeview and Valley, Lakeview and Riverview will be sending out information regarding their end of year celebrations. They will work together and Valley View are still looking at some options, but all information will come from the principals to all the constituents regarding all the end of year activities. And student and staff possession pickup. So people that left things in the school, obviously, we got out quickly. We will offer time for people to come in to pick up their stuff. The staff are working on bagging it up and having it all ready for everybody. And that will be a time for a few people at a time to come into the school to pick up their belongings. This will be managed through the principals as well. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. Dr. Kulis, assistant superintendent comments?
Yes, the fifth grade middle school placement meeting will be held on May 20th at 6:00 PM. It will be a virtual meeting and the email is going out tomorrow with the login information. The fifth grade to sixth grade orientation will be held on May 27th, also at 6:00 PM. So in the same email, you'll get the logins for the placement information as well as the orientation. Just a reminder that kindergarten registration is still going on. If you have not registered your kindergartner, please do so with the online link, which can be found at our website. Currently, we have 176 kindergarteners registered. And this concludes the assistant superintendent comments.
Thank you, Dr. Kulis. Demaris, are there any business administrator comments?
No comments.
Okay, I was typing it, but at this time, we're going to open up the meeting for the first public session. So if there are members of the public out there that want to speak, if you could just type your name in the chat and once you're called on, I'm sorry, your name and address in the chat for the record. And once you're called on, you can unmute yourself and go ahead and make your comment or question. So I'm just going to give it a minute or two here. I see we have, according to my screen, 21 people on. So if anybody has a comment or question for the board, feel free to let us know. Demaris, I apologize. I didn't notice the time. Did you notice the time that we opened the public section?
7:34.
I have 7:36 now, is that what you have?
That is correct.
Okay, so I don't see any comments coming up and we haven't heard anybody. So we're going to close the public meeting session, the public discussion section and move on with old business. Mr. Kim, would you please move us through old business?
Sure, so old business, no action to be taken during the next meeting. We will be going through items A, B, and C, A being the Treasury reports and the Board's Secretary reports, along with education reports about student enrollment and the health office, along with voting on minutes from work session meeting and executive of April 6th and the regular session on April 27th.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Before we go on to new business, I had spoken to, I think, everybody about kind of reworking our work session and taking the time at the work session to review the committee minutes prior to going through the action items, whether for now during the COVID time, we've been voting on them during work session. Typically, we move them to regular session. So I think everybody was in favor of that. So tonight, if we could try it and see how it works out as we go through in the beginning. So for example, personnel is the first thing under new business. So I'm just going to ask the chair of the committee to give a brief summary of what was discussed at the committee. And then what should come up would be the action items that are on the agenda. We've reviewed the policy and it does not state that you need to read those action items into the audio recording for the public. So that's up to you if you want to read your minutes or if you want to summarize or read the items. That'll be up to each committee chair. So with that, if Mr. Anderson, if you would mind, would not mind moving us through personnel, please?
Sure, no problem. So first of all, from a committee report perspective, the committee met last Tuesday, May 5th. And at that meeting, we discussed two main topics, one of which was the staff renewal list for the 2020-2021 school year, which you'll find as an action item for this evening. And then the other thing we discussed was extracurricular activities and what the staff has been doing to adapt with virtual learning for those events, particular some of the sports that had begun prior to our switch to virtual learning and how they have continued with that. So we discussed those two items. I'm happy to answer any questions or you guys can certainly email me if you have any additional questions on that. Was there anything, Laura, anything else Laura you wanted me to discuss? Nope, okay. And if there are no objections, I would like to move under item A, personnel items one through four as a block. They include new hire resignation, retirement, extra pay, salary and adjustment, two items in there, the staff, the multiple staff. Leave act, action items for our, yes, I'll second.
Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
Question, just, just for the record, was there a lot of feedback during Mike's part during that last one or was it just me on my side of the computer?
No, I was getting a lot of delight and feedback.
Same here.
Tito.
Okay, I'm going to try to call in, guys. I'll disconnect the audio, I guess, and try to call in.
Okay, thanks, James. Hey, Mike, you want to just wait for roll call and then?
Sure.
Okay, does anybody have anything else?
Hey, you know what? I just asked Cindy something. Mike, why don't you try just turning off your camera because that might help the bandwidth?
Either that or tell your kids to get off Netflix.
They're doing schoolwork, you know? Mike, can you try saying something? We'll see if you're better. Have we lost you altogether?
Huh?
He's muted, Mike, you're muted.
Okay, I just switched over to my phone. Does that sound better?
Yes, on my end.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, so if there's nothing further for personnel, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass? Mr. Cass? Did we lose him? We might have lost Mr. Cass. I'll get back to him. Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Let me, is Mr. Cass back? Okay.
I think Don is still under his duty and he's muted, isn't he?
He was on the phone as well.
Yeah, I don't see him anymore, listed as being on the call.
You want to just give me a minute? I'll see if I can get him, just give me a minute.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, here's Don's vote, you ready?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Cass, how do you vote on personnel, one through four?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to dial back in again because I could hear you people, but you kept not calling me and you couldn't hear me for some reason.
I could leave it like this if you want. Are you guys, can you guys all hear him?
Yes.
All right, why don't you leave it like this for now?
All right, that's fine, but I don't know what happened because I could hear, I could hear everybody fine. I could hear the votes, DeMaris actually get back to me, but for some reason I'm talking and you're not here, it wasn't going through.
Okay.
We'll go through your phone, thank you.
We'll keep it like this for now.
So, Demaris, everyone has voted now?
Yes.
Okay, so on to finance. Mr. Kim, would you mind moving us through finance with the summary of the committee report first, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to first give you the summary of the finance committee minutes. Our meeting was held on May 5th from 6:30 to 7:15. We went through numbers, budgeted the actual and everything was on target. So there were actually no savings for the shutdown of the schools up to this, up to that point in March 2020. We do expect to see some changes for starting April 2020 and then for the rest of fiscal year. So there should be savings because of no overtime and no substitute teachers, no extra duties, the additional bus routes that were contracted out, along with any parent contracts in lieu of bus transportation payments have been halted. So while there was some good news, there's, and there's also the copier lease change, change to the lease of the copier machines, which resulted in about a $300 or $250 savings, 220. So while there has been some good news, there is some additional potential bad news, similar to the state aid funds being withheld for the next budget cycle. There might, there are rumors that the extraordinary aid funds will not be available for the next school year as well. And that amount is budgeted for $180,000. So in preparation of the state aid and any other potential funds being unavailable, Demaris, Steve and Demaris have put together, put their heads together to see where they can try to save some money for the next budget cycle. And a lot of that included trying to pull in purchases from next year into this year as well as reclassifying and using reserves, reclassifying expenses and using reserves when, when possible, as well as any kind of budget cuts that they can, they could afford. So the total savings for the next budget cycle could potentially be about $921,000. And we are slated to receive state aid of about $1.7 million for the next budget cycle. So the finance committee was definitely grateful and is grateful for all the hard work that Steve, Demaris, and Sandy had done. So if there's no questions with regards to the minutes of the finance committee, I can move on to the agenda. So hearing?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, James, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to echo the gratitude that you expressed to Sandy and to Demaris and Steve. It is a significant amount of money to cut and juggle around. So it's definitely been a lot of work and it is going to save us in the long run. So thank you for your hard work and of course, to the finance committee as well.
I have to give all the credit to Demaris and Steve. I think we were just listening. Now, moving on to the agenda, I motion that we approve for this meeting. Nothing in number one, so number two, the amount of tax monies required for school purposes for 2020-2021 of $32,324,284, which is the budget for 2020-2021. And further, further resolve that these monies be placed in the hands of the treasurer of the school, of school monies according to the following schedule as seen on the agenda. And also to approve the submission of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act application for fiscal year 2021 and accept the grant award of funds upon subsequent approval for the fiscal year 21 IDEA application for the amounts of $366,475 for basic public, $3,187 for non-public, and $21,841 for preschool.
Don, second in already. Don jumped in, he's got it.
Mr. Cass, yeah. Okay, does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns about finance? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is operations and along with transportations and B and G. Don, do you, I don't know with your setup, is it convenient for you to run us through that?
Yeah, you're right, you're a little bit broken up over the phone, but I, yeah. Quick review of the committee report and our meeting from May 5th. Under transportation, there are no items to discuss in detail or to move on tonight's agenda. And the May 7th, 2020 committee meeting was canceled, will be rescheduled in September. Some key items that were discussed at the committee meeting that were in the report, we reinvestigated the replacement of the two water mains at the Riverview annex and had another two estimates come in. And long story short, the Murray paving cost of $3,956 was the best that we could do. And we had a local plumber inspect the job and he estimated it would be four or five, four to $5,000. It's a pretty complicated job. Sounds easy when you look at it, but it's kind of complicated. So that's going to be an agenda item for tonight to approve. And another big item we discussed was the Value View fence project and Hesse Fence had the best quote to redo the fences. We had four other vendors that we looked at with prices of that. In fact, one was almost $62,000. So any questions on that? Otherwise, I'll ask that the board approve on the agenda on the grounds. Item 2.1 is to approve Murray paving and contracting for the plumbing to the Ulanix, $3,956.40. And item 2.2 is to approve the expense company for the installation of the fence at Value Middle School, the amount of $33,682.
Second.
Any comments? Thank you, Mr. Cass. Okay, since there are no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes. Okay, we are moving on to new business, no action to be taken. Mrs. Gould, would you mind moving us through policy revisions?
Sure, okay, make sure I unmute myself, sorry. Did you want me to talk about IMP now or later? Because there's no section.
Well, since it's not, yeah, since it's not here on the agenda, if we could do it at the end under good of the cause?
Sure. I move to, there's no, next meeting, we will be discussing and moving to resolve the first reading of the following policy revisions regarding board officers, victim of domestic or sexual abuse leave, health and physical education, administration of medication, supervision of construction, school year, school day, school closing, reported, reporting potentially missing or abused children.
I have a question. This is James.
Go ahead, James.
Thanks, Laura. I, are we going to be going through second reading of these policies? Didn't we approve first reading during our last work, regular session?
At the May 18th meeting, we'll be second reading, you'll be voting on that.
So then this should be really second reading that we'll be voting on, okay, for the next regular session?
Correct.
I apologize, I missed last meeting, so.
No, it's okay, the agenda is kind of misleading, yeah.
We apologize, it is misleading, it should have been second reading.
You ready? This is cool.
Okay, so just.
You gotta love it, right?
Demaris.
How great is Google Docs?
So just for clarification, Demaris, we are not voting on these at all tonight, but in the next meeting, we will be voting on them for second reading.
That is correct, yes. And Dr. Forte already corrected it on the Google Drive, I believe.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or questions about those policies? Okay, I don't see any, so now we are moving on to good of the cause, which, Katie, here you are, if you want to just summarize the IMP committee minutes, just because IMP wasn't on the agenda because they had no movable items.
No problem, I have a lot of minutes, I'll try to just skim them. We, we reviewed, it's actually the.
One moment, I'm sorry to interrupt. Katie, I just want to, Mrs. Gould, I just want to say some of those items are going to really be on the next agenda and are not ready for public yet. So some of the presentations, so I'm not sure any of the items that we discussed are on this agenda, I know they're not.
Okay, so.
Want to share that as of yet.
Okay, that's why I, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have your phone number. I shot Dr. Forte a quick text before, right before the meeting. I don't know what I can share, should share again.
Okay, so I apologize, this has been a, I made the change last minute. So it sounds like everything that Dr. Collins brought up in the IMP meeting is not for this agenda, but will be on the next agenda.
Yeah.
She also covers some of the things in her assistant superintendent comments, I noticed. So I think these are just things that are, you know, reaching, you know, almost ready for next week, but, next meeting, but, yeah. Next, next time we have an IMP meeting, I'll specifically ask at the end what we should share now and what we should wait on, on, but for the board members, they can access the minutes.
Thank you very much, sorry about that.
No problem, we'll work it out.
Does anybody have anything for good of the cause, other committee reports, correspondence, discussion items?
This is James again, sorry to jump in, but I just wanted to add something else to the finance committee meeting minutes. The one thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is that a lot of the trans, a lot of the transactions that appear on the transfer report that we will be voting on for the next meeting, should, you should start to see a lot of the movement that the administration is doing with regards to pulling in, in purchases for this fiscal year or into this calendar cycle or fiscal cycle. So if there are questions, you can ask either Demaris or myself, but the transfer report, I've already started to notice for April, there's a lot of line items being moved around to accommodate for these purchases. So that should be an indicator of a lot of these things working out.
Thank you, James.
Katie, this is Dino, I have a couple of things real quickly. The New Jersey school boards, we had the legislative committee meeting this Saturday morning, actually had over 100 participants, which actually they couldn't even do live because their headquarters in Trenton is so small. So the virtual meeting went very well. We had an hour-long session with Assembly Speaker Sweeney, who filled us in on some of the things that are happening there. He was actually, I thought, very forthright with us and kind of blunt. It seems like at this point, from a budget point of view, they're a little bit at loggerheads with the administration. As we know, they extended the fiscal year for a fifth quarter. They did that with the understanding that the administration would be sharing a lot of information with them about the fiscal, you know, the fiscal health of the state. So far, they haven't really gotten any of that information. So they're struggling, they're hoping to get more of that information. I think it's May 22nd when the state treasurer issues his report. But they are not, not optimistic, obviously, but they really don't know yet what we're going to be dealing with from a budget point of view. So he recommended, which we're already doing, creating a COVID-19 budget, something, you know, an auxiliary budget that we could use in the event that things kind of go sideways and to keep that in our back pockets. They, they say, he said they feel very strongly that the budgets, the budget numbers we were given in February and March, obviously, we relied on those, all districts built their budgets on those, so they're trying as hard as they can to make us as whole as they can. But there's just so many. But there's just so many open questions right now. They really don't know where things are going to end. We also had some good discussions about plans for the fall. Again, everything is so fluid. They really didn't have firm guidance just to let us know that they're, you know, they're working really hard with the DOE and to try to understand, you know, what the issues we're going to be facing might be. So it was, it was productive. It was really good to hear the speaker, you know, talk to it. Takes so long on a Saturday morning to kind of fill us in, let us know, you know, that we're on their minds. So that was really, I thought, was, was really great that we were able to do it. The other thing was I was able to sit in on the Riverview PTA meeting, their first virtual meeting this, this, they did that this week. They've obviously canceled all the in-person events. They're returning money for things like the fun fair. And they're obviously starting to look forward to next year, you know, and what their activities might look like. They are purchasing, I believe, T-shirts and some other things that are going to be given out to the students later, especially the fifth graders to celebrate, they're moving up. And they're kind of in the middle of all of that right now. And that's about it.
Thanks, Dino. I wondered, since you guys had such a high attendance at the delegate meeting, do you feel that, and the commute down to Trenton, did you think that, just your personal opinion, do you think that you lost something having a virtual meeting? Or do you think that, do you think it was worth the experience that way?
Oh, it was worth it to do it. I mean, you know, again, like this meeting I think we're having now, if you can't do it any other way, this is the way to do it. But yeah, we did, you know, not being in the room with people is definitely different. It was great that so many more people were able to attend. But, you know, the, being there in the room is, is, you know, it's always nice, especially with members of different boards from all over the state. You get to have side conversations that, you know, obviously in that kind of forum, you just don't get to. So, and I also missed out on my free breakfast.
But not the commute.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Does anybody have anything else?
Hey, Laura, it's Mike. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hey, just wanted to add one quick comment. I, I attended the Lakeview fifth grade committee meeting last week virtually. I think their PTA meeting is this week, but they're, they had their, they moved their fifth grade committee meeting up just with, obviously, the news of the physical closing of the schools to the end of the school year and wanted to discuss some end of the year items. And I, I just, obviously, they're similar to Dino's experience with the Riverview PTA. They're working on some contingency plans for what they can do or what they may be able to do for the fifth graders to kind of acknowledge them. But I really wanted to go actually out of my way to not talk about the specifics of what the meeting was, but really to thank Mrs. Basely. She got on the meeting, you know, it was, it was not a short meeting on a, on an evening. And she got on and I have to say, did a phenomenal job making everybody comfortable. It's uncomplable that the fifth graders who look forward to things like the clap out and many of the activities are obviously upset, the parents and the, and the children that they can't do it. They're understanding why. But she did a phenomenal job on saying, they'll always be our students. That we're going to do the best we can, no matter when it is, to try to make sure they feel as comfortable as possible moving on and congratulating them on their accomplishments at Lakeview. So I just wanted to thank Mrs. Basely and the administration across all the schools, as well as in the board office, for what they're doing, not just academically, but emotionally for our students as they miss some of these larger events and things they would have, normally have in person. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Mike. It's, it's definitely a good point to bring up. I was also on the call. And I think the comments afterwards were that Mrs. Basely brought almost all the parents to tears. And I know that sentiments are felt that way about the administration and the other buildings, that everybody's going out of their way to try to make it the best experience, given, given the scenario. So thank you to everyone. I wanted to talk to you guys now that we're all together as a group about this format of going, keeping, I don't want to know if you want to say less formal, but doing a committee report review and maybe having some conversation about that and not going strictly by reading the action item that's going to be on the next meeting's agenda as well as, and this is a question for you, Steve. I know that when the COVID crisis began, we were moving everything immediately on the, on every meeting's agenda because we didn't know what was going to be happening. I think now we're kind of established that we're going to be doing virtual meetings for a while at least. So I didn't know how you felt, Steve, about if we need to continue that practice or if we could go back to the regular practice of keeping items only time-sensitive items on the work session agenda.
Yeah, I think we could do that. I, I mean, we're going to have these, these meetings, pretty much. If there's something I really think is super important, that just in case there's a reason why we can't have the next meeting, I'll put it on, but other than that, I think we can go back.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments about that or about the changing the format of the work session and bringing the committee reports ahead of the items and separately?
As I understand it, the whole point of having stems from before we were doing lots of stuff electronically. So I don't think there's, as long as we change the appropriate policies to reflect what we're actually planning on doing, I don't think there's a problem with it.
Steve, I'm sorry. I don't know what you mean about electronically, but, and having them at the end. So I apologize. Like, I guess I'm going to need you to clarify that. But, and Steve and Damaris jump in here, but I think that the only policy that refers to the board setup is that policy that outlines work session is required to discuss items of the upcoming agenda, which we would continue to, to do.
That's right. The, the current policy, it's a bylaw, says that the, during the work session, you discuss what's going to happen at the next session. And by discussing the minutes, that would be doing the same thing.
This is James.
Does that address your concern? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
Does that address your concern?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is James. I actually, you know, being somewhat new to the board, even though I've been here two years now, when I first came to meetings, it was, it was very confusing. And I actually feel that this might be a better way of communicating to the public a lot of the details of what we're discussing on the agenda and an explanation of what we're discussing on the agenda. So I feel that this is a nice format that, that we, that I would like to continue to experiment with.
Thanks, James. I think that some committees, especially IMP, will need to review what is ready to be discussed in the public section, just because they don't always, they have many items to discuss, but they're not always turned into something that we vote on. So I think that might be the committee where we might just have to include their report at the end of the work session. Like, for example, tonight's agenda, there was nothing to vote on for them. But other than that, I think it will work if we just stick it into the first, you know, the committee report being the first item within the group. So I don't know if that means that we should change the order on the work session agenda. And if we do that, then I think we need a policy revision. I'm looking for some guidance, Steve.
I will need to contact the New Jersey school boards before I can comment on this, Mrs. Wagner. I am not sure.
That's fair. You know, I certainly didn't expect you to have the answer tonight. So something to, to look into. And if you're going to reach out to New Jersey school boards, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Mrs. Wagner, if, if you'd like, I don't know if it falls under personnel, but certainly if, if you think it does, or whatever committee, maybe, maybe we can take that policy. It's a pretty short one, the board policy, how the board meetings run. It may be worthwhile to kind of refresh and look at it anyway. And it might be a quick agenda item for a committee to do. It's just an idea.
I think that's a great idea. If, I don't know if the committee feels that that's something they can tackle right now. If you're the chair, if you, if you and Dr. Cullis think that that's recommended, then I think that's a great idea.
I'm good with taking, I'll take it and take a stab at it. I'll send something over to the committee to take a look at. I think, I think it's probably something that we need to refresh. And if you guys have ideas, I'll send the link out to the policy. And if any of the other board members have any ideas or anything, they, you know, it's not a long policy. So, and it really is kind of particular to our board. It has the actual agenda items. So we could probably adapt that pretty quickly.
Great. Thank you.
I, I'm adding the policy to your folder for the, for the IMP Personnel Committee.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about policies, since we're talking about policies?
Of course, James.
Thank you, Mrs. Wagner. It just occurred to me as, as I was going through the school closings policy, that is there, and, and this is a question for Dr. Cullis, Dr. Forte, as well as IMP, is there a potential opportunity to look at remote learning or, you know, learning the, the current setup that we have so that in the future, we continue to utilize what we're learning this year? Virtual learning, I believe, is going to be the wave of the future. And in lieu of school closings, maybe this is something we incorporate into the policy. Or I don't know if the administration has any kind of thoughts or, or plans in, in terms of moving virtual learning into a normal part of the curriculum. And this is something that I feel that we are learning so much on and we are getting better and better at it that we may be able to incorporate this in lieu of school closings like snow days and whatnot so that, you know, we don't miss out on what we've gained up to this point, as well as what we will continue to gain.
I believe we're going to have to do that. So we're going to, we're going to need guidance from you, Steve, but we're going to, we're going to be required to do that each year. Just like it happened before and, and they haven't done it in a while, but every year we used to have to redo our bird flu plan. So now I'm sure we're going to have to have some kind of a virtual plan. So we're just going to need a little more guidance, James, but we're definitely going to do that.
One, one thing I love about our district is a lot of times we take the lead on a lot of these things. So I, I don't mean to put the onus on you or Dr. Cullis, but, but I do feel that they might ask, look at us and say, hey, what do you guys think? But I, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Forte.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have anything else?
I'd like to say, we'll bring up one thing. Dino, sorry, Mr. Capello touched on Riverview and the PTA and the events being canceled. But they're actually, they are having an online scholastic book fair until May 17th. I don't know if the other schools are doing something like that, but it might be extra helpful to spread the word of that if people can because it's one of the few fundraisers that can still happen. And I know in person, they always had the opportunity to buy books for the classroom or the library. I didn't really see that as an option this time. I may get in touch with them about that. But I just wanted to suggest that and passing it along to people.
Thank you, Katie. That's good to know that they're still holding that fundraiser. As far as the Lakeview PTA goes, and obviously, all the buildings PTs have had to cancel most of their fundraisers. I know as a member of the Lakeview PTA that our largest fundraiser is the Tricky Tray. And they usually raise about $20,000 worth of funds, which they won't be able to do this year. So like all the other events, they're being refunded, but they are asking parents if they are able to consider donating to the PTA as they will be losing a significant amount of funds this year, since they can't hold all these fundraisers. Okay. Does anybody on the board have anything else they'd like to discuss tonight? I don't see anything, so it is 8:17. And we're going to open up the meeting for our second public comment section. So if you want to address the board or have a question, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record and go ahead. Or feel free to type it in the chat if you're unable to speak. We're just going to give you a minute or two to respond. Okay. I don't see anyone looking to comment. I have a time of 8:18, so we can close the public session at 8:18. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn second.
I usually don't have to ask you guys.
It took me a minute to click off the mute button.
So I think it was Mr. Capello, second by Mr. Lur. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? No's? Okay. We are finished. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.